Instead of, just to make it really clear. And then up above that, under Agenda Item 3, there was no public comment returned to Board. And I would like to see a short sentence in there that said OSBT requested revisions to the wording in the agreements. Just to reflect that the Board did something more than having it returned to the Board.
Then on Page 2, under Lindsey Sterling-Krank's last name begins with a K.
Good point, yep.
Do the motion approve the amended minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second? All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. The next is public comment for items not identified for public hearing. There aren't any items for a public hearing, so if anyone wants to speak on any issue, now's the time to do so. And Leah tells me no one has signed up. Okay, then. Then we'll close public comment, and Dan, move to matters from the department.
All right. I've got a few informal matters that I think I will do after we'll get through the A through D. So we're going to now turn things over to City Utilities staff, who is going to provide the Board with an update on some sewer line projects that are in the works that involve some OSMP lands. And as well, Brandon will provide us with a quick update of where we're at in the process and where we're going over the next three or four months in terms of the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project. So there'll be one slide and a brief update on where we're at with that. But with that, I'll turn it over to Cole with City Utilities Department.
Thanks, Dan. So I'm Cole Sigmund, an engineering project manager in the Utilities Division of Public Works. Can everyone hear me okay?
Cole, check to see if your microphone is on.
Okay.
It is green.
It is? Oh, sorry.
You might just want to bend into it.
Okay. And maybe I'll just move slightly here. Thanks for giving us the opportunity for this update today. Our goals today are to give you an overview, first of all, of the wastewater collection system and to talk about two projects specifically, two of four that were identified in our 2016 Collection System Master Plan that will have impacts on open space. This slide has a map of the wastewater collection system on the right. There are 360 miles of sewer pipe that appear in the green lines in the mountain. If you'd like to later on, I'd be happy to show you how to follow your own flesh. This system conveys residents, conveys wastewater from residences and businesses in the City Boulder out to the Water Resource Recovery Facility. And the Water Resource Recovery Facility is so named because it recovers fertilizer, energy, and water. So that water is discharged back into Boulder Creek as clean water. The good news is that the majority of the system is, has plenty of capacity. And the thing that causes capacity issues are wet weather flows. When we say wet weather flows, it refers to a large volume of diluted wastewater flow that's conveyed in the collection system from the impact of what we call rainfall-derived inflow and infiltration. So rainwater that gets into the wastewater collection system, the sanitary sewer, through cracks and openings, that's unintentional. So we don't have a combined sewer system, but stormwater does unintentionally get in the system, and it causes capacity issues. What do those capacity issues look like, and why are they important? Well, here are two very visual examples of what a capacity issue looks like. So this is called a manhole surcharge. When the collection system isn't adequately sized for the flow, wastewater backs up out of the covers of manholes. This also happens in residences where they don't have check valves on their building sewer, their private lateral, and their basements can flood like many did in the 2013 flood. Another issue in the system is that many parts of the system are over 50 years old, especially the large parts of the system that were installed a long time ago are concrete pipe. This image is of a concrete pipe. And the interesting thing is, it looks like a corrugated steel pipe. But when this was installed, it would have been very smooth. What's happened over time is that the harsh wastewater environment has corroded the concrete away so that the rebar in that pipe is exposed. So that's just a visual image of the internal corrosion that's happening. So many of these pipes are at the end of their useful life and need to be replaced. As a matter of prioritization, the 2016 Master Plan identified four of the highest priorities in the system. And these are circled here from bottom to top. The Baseline and Foothills Project, the Arapahoe Trunk Sewer Replacement Project, the Goose Creek Trunk Sewer Replacement and Rehabilitation Project, and the Main Interceptor Realignment Project. All of these need to be upsized, at least to increase wet weather capacity. And two of these, as I mentioned, will impact open space lands. This is a list of those projects, those four projects. Baseline is listed at the top, Baseline and Foothills Trunk Sewer Replacement Project, estimated dollars at $5 million, 1.8 miles. And temporary impacts from this project will be on Oliver and Burke 1, which are OSMP properties along Baseline just west of South Boulder Creek. The Interceptor Sewer Realignment Project is a large project that basically goes from Butte Mill out to the Water Resource Recovery Facility, 3.1 miles in length. And there's going to be a new easement on the Sawhill Ponds Wildlife area. And that state wildlife area has an open space and mountain parks management lease on it. The other two trunk sewer replacement projects will not have open space resource impacts. So this is an overview of the Baseline and Foothills Trunk Sewer Replacement Project. We'll be installing 15 to 27-inch pipe. Part of the project is up along the median of Foothills, and then it will be along Baseline Road within the City of Boulder, entering into the county at the Burke 2 property, and then connecting to the existing 36-inch interceptor that runs through the Oliver property. $4 to $5 million, and the construction is planned for next year or the following year. The Burke 1 property and Oliver property have many resources that have been identified through collaboration, through investigation on the part of utilities consultants, and also collaboration with OSMP staff. So both properties are along the South Boulder Creek Flood Plain. They're irrigated cut pasture that serve as habitat for Preble's Meadow Jumping Mouse and Lady's Tresses Orchid, which has been documented on the Burke 1 property and the Burke 2 property. There's also Howard Ditch Crossing that's involved in the project. That photo on the right is of Howard Ditch as it runs through the Oliver property. And there's no SMP agricultural lease. This slide shows several examples of how collaboration between utility staff and open space staff have resulted in a proposed alignment that minimizes impacts on these open space properties. And so I wanted to tell this story by looking at three examples. One is in red, one is in orange, and I can use my, if you can see my pointer here. This is the red line. The orange is right here, and then there's a burgundy line up here. And so I'll start with the red line. Originally, we proposed heading off of Baseline onto the Burke 2 property, and that was because Baseline Road doesn't have shoulders in this area. It drops off on the north and south side. And in the road, there are several, in the right-of-way, there are several utility conflicts. There's a power line at the south, the existing wastewater trunk sewer. There's a water line, 24-inch transmission line in there. And there's a 16-inch main for natural gas. And so being in the road means being in the middle of the road, which would result in about a month-long closure of Baseline Road. After discussions with open space staff, we together met with Boulder County, and the transportation engineer there agreed that the resources on the Burke 2 property merited this month-long closure, and so we're moving forward with permitting within Baseline for that portion of the alignment. Next, we'll move to the red. This north-south portion of alignment is needed to chase grade, in other words, for the elevations to match up, to connect to the existing sewer. Originally, that was proposed on the west side of Howard Ditch. Crossing Howard Ditch and connecting to the existing interceptor, that's just a shorter run and less complex from ditch crossing standpoint. And what we learned after doing wetland mapping is that there are significant wetlands in the area. The Howard Ditch Crossing is not ideal. It's a state historic ditch. And so what we proposed was basically going on the other side of the existing interceptor and the Howard Ditch, and so we'll be on the east side of both. The additional benefit that has is that we won't have to get a, we won't be requesting a disposal for this project because the interceptor, the new pipe will live within our existing easement. The last one I'll talk about is the burgundy section. So as I mentioned, the north-south alignment is needed to chase grade, and the elevations were such that we had to chase grade about 700 feet. We were able to cut that about in half by changing the pipe diameter within Baseline, and so we were able to impact less of the Oliver property there. We'll handle the temporary impacts on that property through a memorandum of understanding between the Utilities Division and Open Space Mountain Parks. And this project will also undergo federal permitting, City of Boulder wetland permitting. And through that process, we'll survey the threatened species and do a very careful job of remediation and restoration. I'll move on to the next project here. Here's a slide that is, that shows the Main Interceptor Sewer Realignment. This project will involve rehabilitating 2.6 miles of the existing interceptor that's 42-inch, and then installing 2.4 miles of new interceptor that may be up to as large as 66-inch. It's a $35 million project that's slated for 2022 to 2024 construction. You can see the purple line is our existing interceptor sewer, and its proximity to Boulder Creek is another issue. So it's under capacity. It has internal corrosion issues that I showed you. It's also prone to floodwaters of Boulder Creek, and we've done some point repairs because of some real exposure on that section. So the proposed alignment in brown, there's a narrative on how we got to that alignment and why it is that we're sort of keeping both, and I'd like to tell you that now. So the original alternatives analysis had basically three options. The black line is the purple line you saw before, so the existing interceptor sewer running through here. There was a northern line alignment that was considered. There are two creek crossings, and it goes through the Fort Chambers Poor Farm, OSMP property, and a private property. And so for many reasons, we did not select that one. And so an alignment was proposed along the RTD corridor, and it was, the one that ended up getting proposed was a hybrid that spent some time on the RTD right-of-way and then some time on some Colorado Parks and Wildlife trails that are managed by Open Space Mountain Parks. Then the third one was at the south, the Valmont Alignment, which would involve a very long closure of Valmont Road and would be monumentally expensive. So when we proposed this to the county, one of the things they said is, okay, you can, you know, we can approve this on a few conditions. A couple important things happened. They wanted us to abandon the section of the existing interceptor that we were no longer using. That was problematic because there are some flows coming in from the north that you can see in our, this is our asset management tool here. This is the four-mile trunk sewer, as we call it, and it carries about 10% of the city's flow. And so that was pretty significant. The other thing that happened is that we weren't able to get agreement from RTD on a parallel alignment within their right-of-way. They say they're going to put two tracks there, and we have no way to contest that. It's their land. So we propose now a perpendicular crossing of the RTD right-of-way. That sent us into comprehensive alternatives analysis. One of the issues, what we wanted to address is, how do we get that four-mile trunk sewer flow into the system with a southern alignment? So there are many, many nodes on this map, and we basically selected nodes based on property, different properties, different alignments, and we combined the nodes into different alternatives. This comprehensive alternatives analysis was shared with you in detail. I'd be happy to talk through it at more length at a separate occasion, but suffice it to say that through collaboration with Open Space staff, we landed on an alternative that was a hybrid option that allowed us to be in the south without building a lift station. The lift station appears here on the Stradie Klein OSMP property. It would be there or around that property. And the, so the current plan is to follow Valmont, come up 61st, go along the rear of properties along the RTD right-of-way, cross the RTD right-of-way perpendicularly, come along the Keeter Hogan property, and then join with the CPW-owned Sawhill Ponds State Wildlife area that Open Space manages, and then join onto a trail along the Walden Ponds County Open Space area and connect to the Water Resources Recovery Facility at its southwest corner. An important part of this is that we'd keep a portion of the existing interceptor sewer. Not only would we keep it from 61st up to the plant, we'd also find benefit in keeping the rest of it basically down to Valmont, which provides us with a future opportunity for redundancy that we've never had on this critical line. One thing I'd like to point out on this slide is this property here. So you can see the property line. This is the Sawhill Ponds SWA all along here, and you can see the alignment within it. Here's a different map of the Sawhill Ponds area. This is from OSMP's website, and it shows the trails in Sawhill Ponds, and then it shows the trails in Walden Ponds, the county open space area. That area is accessed in two ways. One of them is through city property where the Water Resource Recovery Facility is. There are a lot of resources on this property as well. The pond and wetland habitat dominate. There are 500 feet of the proposed alignment that are Preble's Meadow Jumping Mouse habitat. There's an osprey nest, so resulting seasonal rapture closure, raptor closures, and there are recreational trails. Finally, there are ditch crossings. Butte Mill Ditch and Green Ditch are in that area, and so there'll be some coordination from staff there. So I wanted to take a moment to talk about how the resources in that area will be protected, and there are a few regulatory bodies in place and processes in place that will protect the area. The first is not a hard regulatory one, and it's just in a departmental collaboration between utilities and open space. We'll continue that. It's been meaningful in the past, and we have hopes that it'll continue to be a good way to minimize impacts on lands and still allow for utility priorities. City wetland regulations, including remediation requirements, are expected. Even though this is not in the city, we will still go through the City of Boulder's wetland permitting process. There'll also be a stormwater management plan, which defines things like how construction impacts will be limited to the construction area, how water quality in the ponds will be preserved, that kind of thing. And then, like the Carter Lake Pipeline project that is proceeding with construction right now, we expect many conditions of approval. That project had 34 conditions of approval that addressed resource issues, ecological, cultural, hydrologic. It also, because, and this is another similarity between the Carter Lake Pipeline project and the Main Interceptor Sewer Replacement Project, is that the county open space is also impacted, and so the county will likely extend requirements that they have for their own open space into the property that's managed by City Open Space. So summary comments are that interdepartmental collaboration minimizes unavoidable OSMP land and resource impacts, and that OSMP resources will be protected. With that, I'm happy to answer questions now or later, and I've just included two summary of, a summary of both of the projects on the right here.
So could you, or Don, or someone go into a little more detail on the anticipated impacts, on the Baseline Foothills one, you said they were temporary, or no, Burke Oliver, you said there were temporary impacts. What are those?
Right. And I think a good way to explain that would be go back, would be to go back to this figure. And so the black line is the proposed alignment. I'll point out here, here's the Oliver property. Here's the property line. Howard Ditch is right here. There's an access to that property that's not shown here. It's a driveway to the old house that was there. And so this would be an open-cut installation of a 24-inch sewer line. It will be sort of intensified construction. In other words, we wouldn't be digging down and having vehicles drive along there. It would be shored up, engineered shoring for the, basically pointed excavation for this line. And so in that way, the construct, the excavation impacts would be minimized. There's also a draft memorandum of understanding that would require our contractor to do, you know, extensive remediation following construction, things like managing the topsoil separately and putting it back and doing, you know, careful reseating. John, would you like to speak to this, too?
Sure. John Potter, Resource and Stewardship Manager. And Dave, I would just mention that staff have worked very closely on, first, locating this in an area with much lower resource value than where it was originally planned. We feel like utility staff has been, has worked very closely with us to mitigate all of staff's concerns on resource impacts here on this property, and so we're fully supportive of this layout.
So is the black line actually on Open Space and Mountain Parks property?
It is. So the Oliver--
How far does it go further to the east?
The property extends further to the east, yes. And so--
Oh, okay.
If you imagine that property, this pipe would be to the left of the driveway to the old house, the house that was demolished when that property was purchased in 2017.
Yeah, there used to be a residence to the east, and so that's why there's probably less value in this area from a resource standpoint. It's been restored, in the process of being restored. But the area right along the ditch on this, on the east side of the ditch, is not as big a concern as where it was located on the west side, so.
Thank you.
So the temporary impacts are basically construction impacts?
Correct.
So for both of these, and the answer may be different because I'm assuming the interceptor is a wider pipe, how wide is the area of the disturbance? How much ground do you have to dig up in order to put the pipe in?
Right. And so the MOU in this area describes a 50-foot sort of temporary access, what we'd usually call a temporary easement, although when we both own and are requesting an easement on the land, it's not an easement, it's just, you know, an MOU. And so 50 feet here on the other project, it is a much bigger pipe, and so we're requesting 100 feet and of, from CPW, on the CPW property, we're requesting 100 feet of temporary and 50 feet of permanent easement.
Does the, do those two figures represent the area that will literally be dug up, or does some of that include where the equipment might go? And so that isn't, I realize the equipment has impacts, but, or is some of that, the equipment goes there and then you dig up a smaller area to actually drop the pipe in the ground?
That's exactly right. And so the actual excavation is a very small portion of both of those figures, especially in this case where we're doing the engineered shoring. The actual excavation will only be about six feet in width, but the 50 feet includes, you know, driving, it includes, you know, where we'd want to put the topsoil, for example, where we lay the pipe as it gets installed, things like that.
So, and the easement, to elaborate, the easement that you referred to, I gather on that open space property, the Utilities Department already has an easement for a pipeline?
Correct.
So you're, what you're proposing to do is within the boundaries of the exist, the existing easement is wide enough to reach?
Right. And so the permanent impact of the sewer being underneath open space will be within the existing 25-foot easement, but the temporary impact for construction will be a little wider than that. And so that's why this MOU needs to exist for us to access that area. So, and it's important to talk about the difference between, so this is OSMP fee property, where utilities had an easement before OSMP bought it. And so that 25-foot easement is there. And if we needed, if we needed to put a pipe outside of our existing easement, that would likely be a disposal, and we'd be having a different conversation with the Board. On, in the other case, on the CPW-owned property, the proposal is to do a separate lease to the one that CPW already has with the City of Boulder. The separate lease would cover temporary and permanent utilities easements.
That with CPW?
That would be directly between the city and CPW. And so the city would have two agreements with CPW, one a management lease and one utilities easement.
So has CPW been involved in the conversations?
They have.
So can I, because I think the disposal questions are probably different. The judgment on the baseline, on that portion of the baseline project is that because the construction activity is temporary, there's no need to dispose of the land even though it's outside of the utility's current easement. That is, essentially, the view is that if there's a temporary construction activity on open space land, there's not, viewing that that's not a disposal situation, that's a temporary sort of non-exclusive license.
Yeah, it was pretty close to what already exists. The understanding was before we acquired this property, and the resource value is very low. We consider it low in that area, so.
But you're right, Tom.
Okay.
So what will it look like when all is said and done?
So the ideal will be for it to look almost exactly the same, with the exception of a couple manholes that are fairly nondescript. In the case of CPW land, the manholes will exist along existing recreational trails, and they have already requested that the manholes not be visible. And so normally, you know, to respond to emergencies and to respond, to do normal maintenance, of course, our maintenance crews like to be able to see the manholes. And, but in, you know, in certain cases, we're willing to make exceptions to that, and that we've already agreed to do that with CPW. And this property, the same could be true, although it's not a gravel pathway. And so if we're planting grass, it would be very hard to plant grass over a manhole lid. So the expectation would be for the manhole lids to be visible on the surface. But you can see that there's, you know, there, in addition to the existing ones, there'll just be two that are proposed within the property.
Can I, the second half of my question, on the disposal on the interceptor in the Sawhill area, that's land that, the land that you're focusing on is land that's owned by the state, currently managed by the city, and for that, there's no easement that the Utilities Department can sort of piggyback off of? You're making the judgment that it's not a disposal because we manage the property but don't own it?
The state owns the property. We have a management lease. That should not change, or it may change in a very minor way. There's no, there was nothing there purchased with Open Space dollars, so we didn't see it as a disposal issue.
All right. So the point would be the, I was just sort of thinking through the distinction between that and Long's Garden, which we wouldn't own either, is that the conservation easements that we have on lots of properties are paid for with Open Space-- space dollars.
Correct.
They usually are, sometimes they're free, but they're usually paid for with open space dollars, or is this where you think, you're thinking that it's not open space lands in the meaning of the charter because we just manage it?
Right.
I believe it's a 30-year lease?
Yeah.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to think about that, but, okay.
Well, while you're thinking about that, I want to continue on-
Sure, go ahead.
A question on Sawhill. You used a word, and I'm sorry I didn't jot it down, about the, the, I think you said access and the right-of-way in Sawhill of the sewer line, that you would retain, what was the word you used?
So what we're requesting from CPW is 100-foot temporary utilities easement, that would be for construction-
And-
And then a 50-foot permanent easement.
Okay, and the permanent easement, as I understand it, is where there is a trail now, right?
For the most part, that's true.
So, how does a sewer easement and a trail come together?
There, there are very compatible uses of land, in my opinion, and so you, you might imagine that the trail being gravel, and so construction would, would basically remove the trail-
Yeah.
Install the pipe, put the trail back. In this case, you wouldn't even be able to find the manholes. We'll be able to find them, of course-
Right.
With metal detectors and, and GPS, but recreational users of the trail won't be able to identify that there's a sewer underneath the trail.
So your easement will be under the trail?
The easement, the reason for a permanent easement is that it gives us access in perpetuity to that-
From the surface?
From the surface.
Yeah.
And so if we need, for example, if, if the system surcharges, or for preventative maintenance, to prevent the system from surcharging, for example, occasionally we access those manholes. We're talking once, twice a year on a, on a line like this, maybe not even that. And so it's, it's infrequent access, but it's important that city utility staff does have access, permanent access to the area.
I have two questions. On Burke Two, there was some mention of a previously impacted what was a prior road. Can you just describe specifically how, is this being put where the previous impact was, beside it, how are those things relational?
So the, the land, the properties, let's just be clear, so Burke Two was on the original design, the, the current proposed design does not have any impacts on Burke Two.
Oh, okay.
The impact on Burke One is this little section of pipe right here at the very bottom that connects the, the new pipe that'll be within baseline road to the existing pipe that runs through the Burke One property.
So, help me understand how the pre-existing road plays into that?
I'm not sure what pre-existing road you're-
You may be referring to the driveway on the Oliver-
Yeah, oh, so, so on the Oliver property, the Oliver property was acquired in 2017. At the time of acquisition, there was a house there, and so as you were driving along baseline road, headed eastbound on the left, you know, beautiful pasture, Burke Two property, Howard ditch, Oliver property, it was a residence, and very recently it became open space land. And so this is, I think, one of the reasons why it's considered not to have as high of ecological value. It also has a driveway, and that, that driveway is, is used by the, the lease, the person who, the entity leases the land, and open space staff. I, I won't claim to know much about that, and so, I mean, I get far out of my-
Very good call, well, I think it's good.
Yep. So I, I guess, just tell me, there's, there's a pre-existing driveway, and it's pre-impacted, is, is there opportunity to utilize that, or is this going in a different place? It's hard to see from the map.
Yeah, so, so if you can picture in your mind's eye, being along baseline road, looking east, the Howard ditch crosses under you and then proceeds along the, the northern part of the right-of-way, and then heads north through the property. On the left of the ditch, it's wetland, and you can see, it's very green. On the right of the ditch, the, the property goes up, it's upland, so not wetlands. A little farther in, there's still some remnants of the old residence that was there. There's an existing driveway, that driveway is, is the, the only way onto the property currently from baseline road, so we imagine that our contractor will use that driveway. So to your point, that, that existing driveway will be used for construction, so the transportation impacts that would be realized, accessing into a different part of the property where there's not already an access point, what we're proposing is sort of, the impacts are less than that.
And that may affect our operational access to the Oliver property, but we can get to it from Burke Two, the tenant can get to it from Burke Two, leases both areas.
The second question I had was, you, you showed early in the slides what happens when these systems back up, can you just paint the picture of what the, the mitigation plan is? Should these things overflow, these manholes pop? I just want to understand on a bigger picture, I mean-
Yeah, it's, it's hard to imagine, so the, I think, in all, in both of these-
Not for those of us who had that happen in 2013.
Right, right.
We saw how it happened.
Right, so, so many, there are many residents who, who will tell you a story about their own house, and how there was a health issue inside of it. There are ways to prevent that from happening, but the reality is that it will always happen if it rains enough. So what we've done is we've identified a level of service that we're going to bring our infrastructure up to, it's pretty ambitious, these projects are part of that. So the, the impacts to people, you can maybe imagine sewage in someone's basement, I think, Hal, your question's more about the environmental impact of a sewer surcharge. So that, if, since you're giving me an opportunity to paint a hudgrim picture, I, I will, and it'll be for the interceptor project. When I showed you the, the picture that looked like corrugated pipe, that's actually the second rebar cage, so it's already, the first rebar cage in that pipe is already gone. So that pipe is going to fail. When it fails, there's going to be, you know, the, the flow in that pipe on a normal day, average flow is approximately 10 million gallons, and so one day would be 10 million gallons into Boulder Creek of, of raw sewage. That would have catastrophic impacts, not only on the ecology of Boulder Creek, but downstream users, ditches, the town of Lafayette, you know, South Platte River, so that all those cities that pull off the South Platte, it would be a huge deal. We want to get in front of that, and we're committed to getting in front of that. We're moving through the process, it's, you know, obviously, these types of projects take a long time, but working with open space, it's nice to have done this collaboration before the submittal goes back into the county, and so, you know, if we were to select our top alternative without speaking to open space, it probably would have resulted in a conversation later on about a disposal on the poor farm Fort Chambers property that has very high historic value, that it would be very difficult, and the process would draw out even longer, right? So what we think we have is an alignment that'll work for everyone, as a compromise on both sides, but it'll address a really high priority in the system, so hopefully I didn't get too grim there.
No, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Just one question that I think is tied to that. The, the existing interceptor sewer alignment, which is the corrugated picture that you showed, right? What kind of repairs do you have planned to that old part that has to be kept because of the former canyon flows?
So, so the repair and the remediation, the rehabilitation of that pipe is going to be mostly trenchless, and so where possible, we're going to install a pipe within a pipe.
Okay.
So we're going to put a plastic pipe within the concrete pipe. There are a few ways to do that, and I can talk, you know, for a long time about the pros and cons of each way, but the reality is that all of those techniques involve some surface impacts, and so we've tried to describe those in as much detail as we thought was appropriate without having any final decisions or final design. In Attachment D, that shows that alignment, and shows areas where there will be surface disturbance. Surface disturbance might look, you know, best case scenario, it'll be an HDPE, a plastic pipe sitting on the surface that needs to get install, installed to carry the existing flows. Worst case, we have to pop the top off of a manhole to fit plastic pipe into it and excavate, do a long, narrow excavation on one end of it so that we can fit this pipe into it. So that's a technique called slip lining, and then cured-in-place pipe is another viable technology, and, and so we'll, we'll be weighing, weighing the pros and cons of those two techniques, which have slightly different surface impacts, both have some surface impacts which will be closely coordinated with open space staff, on, on open space property.
So those kinds of remediation are planned and will be happening?
They are planned, they're very necessary, and they are planned.
Okay. I just have one other question, and it has to do with something that you said early on, and my recollection of, in the 1900s of combined sewer overflows and all the national efforts around that. You said that we do not have combined sewer overflows-
That's-
But we do have flows into the sewers from outside because of cracks, do I have that right?
You, you have that right, so, so what we, we describe that as inflow and infiltration, so the cracks, for example, would be infiltration. So after the September 2013 flood, the day after, in the week after, we had a really big spike of flow, and these flows were coming in from people's basements, they were coming in from manholes that were surcharged, they were coming in from illicit connections to the system. Over 2014, 2015, our wastewater flows stayed high. The reason why they stayed high is the water table was high enough-
Right.
That we had more infiltration into those cracks in the pipe. One classic site for that infiltration is at the, the point where private taps connect to the public system, and inevitably, there's, there's a hole that's cut in our pipe and, and water enters, even if we line the pipe, we have to reinstate the service, and remediation strategies that address, you know, the private side, we haven't gotten to yet, some communities are tackling that, but that's actually not the city's property, and so it gets complicated. But we're making, one of the things we're doing for that infiltration and the cracks in the pipe thing, is that we're, we're spending approximately $3 million per year, and there's a 20-year plan to replace or to line all of the pipes in the system that are not already plastic.
Mm-hmm.
So that structurally, we'll be in a better place, we'll have less of the inflow, and eventually, address some of the infiltration as well.
I just want to thank you and all the Open Space and Mountain Parks staff that worked on this collaboration, because I can tell that it was not an insignificant amount of time and effort, and I really appreciate the work that you've done on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cole, and thanks everyone for, you know, taking open space considerations into such careful account in designing these two projects.
So Cole, I have one tentative question, and that is, so no storm drains are connected to the sewer system?
So those illicit connections that I mentioned, that, that happens sometimes, people's sump pumps, storm drains, in the older parts of town, it's hard to identify, and so our, our closed caption TV, you know, sometimes we can identify a lateral where some of that's coming in, where it's obviously not wastewater coming in, we can turn a property's water off and it still comes in, and so those, those issues are really difficult to chase down, but we're making slow progress, and correcting issues as we, as we find them.
But the main storm drains then drain directly into Boulder Creek, or?
That's correct, and, and if you see a storm inlet, often there's Keep It Clean Partnership logo that says, "This drains to creek," right? And so those, that's our stormwater system, that's separate. There, there are some large municipalities in, in the country, older ones typically, that have combined sewers. Chattanooga is dealing with the big issue, Kansas City has a huge issue, Seattle, you know, many, many communities that are on, on consent decree from the EPA, and who are being made to spend an, in, a crazy amount of money on, on those, those issues. We're lucky to have had the planning we did, so our systems are mostly separate, with this small caveat that we do have some impacts from wet weather events.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Cole. We're going to continue with our parade of utility staff, and we thought, as long as you all are here, that we would do some repetition. I don't know how many of you tuned in to a presentation made last month, I believe it was to city council, in which utility staff provided a snapshot of what's going to happen over the next five months in terms of South Boulder Creek, when council will be approached, when boards will be approached, when the community will be approached with some, with some new information that will be brought forward, and, and in talking with Joe and staff, we thought it might be just good to do a very quick synopsis of what was presented last month to you all, so we're all under a, a common understanding of, of when you might see these guys again. So with that, thanks Brendan for coming tonight.
Sure, yeah, no problem. I'm Brendan Coleman, I'm an engineering project manager with the Stormwater and Flood Utility, I'm managing the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project. We've, I've been here before, so it's nice to see you guys again. I'm here to provide an update on the upcoming process and schedule for the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project. Like Dan said, having Cole here, it seemed a, a good time for me to try and get in front of you guys, let you know what's coming down the pipe. I presented in September about some upcoming key milestones related to the project, and just want to outline the process related to those milestones as we see them coming up. So one of the key milestones that was coming up in Q1 of 2020 was this conceptual design analysis report, and that's really what this process is focused on. Yeah, so you can go ahead and flip, flip the slide, so we've presented this timeline to council in November, like Dan mentioned, we've also presented a format of this to RAB to kind of run it through before we went to council. I really want to keep you guys in the loop so you know what's coming down the pipe, and when your input's going to be needed, and who all's going to be giving input, and kind of make sure you guys are aware of the process as we go. So at the council meeting in July, staff was directed to look at modifications to South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation Project as part of the conceptual design analysis. So we've been working on that, and we're getting ready to present the results of that report, so this is really how we're planning to present those results to council, and also to the boards and to the public, just to make sure everybody's really well informed about what we found out from that conceptual analysis report. So, so the results of the analysis, our plan right now is to present those to council in February, at a study session on February 25th, and that's that second purple dot up there, and that's really when we'll release all the results, the study session format gives us a good opportunity to talk to council, get their feedback, really get an in-depth dive on the technical details of what we found and what we're looking for. From that point, we would expect to go to, to the boards and to the public, so that would include the Water Resources Advisory Board, the Planning Board potentially with any land use changes that we might come up with from the analysis, and then the Open Space Board as well. So that would tentatively be the March meeting for you guys, is when we would expect to come here and present those similar results, and really provide council's feedback, and look for your guys' feedback on what we found from the conceptual analysis as well. So the engagement period also includes activities to inform the public, and I think we would, we're planning to do some form of open house, we haven't quite mapped that out, but that would happen in this March-April period, and the intent would be, we want to compile all that information, and then bring that back to council in May, so the boards' feedback, the public feedback, and really get direction on how we're going to proceed with this project from council in May. So this is the same slide they've seen, and that's kind of where we're at. This is just brief, I just wanted to touch base with you guys to make sure you guys were aware of what was coming, so if you've got any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, and, yeah, thanks for the time tonight.
This is a com, a combined question and comment, but I just want to make sure that the March presentation to this board will include the upstream issue, which is sort of different from, I think, some of the conceptual designs that you're probably talking about, which are probably refinements to variant one, and where that's going, because this board, in our feedback to council, had expressed considerable interest in a deeper dive on sort of the upstream issues, and I think it would be very helpful for us to hear in a, sort of a consolidated presentation. I think there may be some bits and pieces that we've seen, and some other pieces that may have gone to council that we may not have seen, but for us to have a consolidated presentation on the state of analysis and thinking on the upstream- the upstream issues, and I'm just speaking for myself, of course, but my suggestion would be that we do that with an eye towards, you know, at the end of that, getting a sense of this board of, is there more that people want to know? And if so, you know, let's be specific about what that is. Are people satisfied that they've heard enough that they have now a basis to evaluate the upstream alternatives or maybe other possibilities? But to do it in a way that is sufficiently kind of fulsome that, rather than what might seem like a check-in, but really presents the state of your analysis, including from any consultants, so that, you know, we can hopefully decide whether that box has been checked and we can, you know, or if it's not checked and we need further analysis, that we can tell you what we see as the things that need to be looked into. But, so I don't know if that was what you were planning to do, but I wanted to make sure at a public proceeding I say that so that there's no misunderstanding about, because I think there's been a lot of interest on, well, where is the board going on the upstream issue? It's my suggestion that we use the March meeting as a way of fully educating the board and seeing what we can do in the way of coming to some resolution on where we are on that issue.
Tom, if I may, because I've had some direct one-on-one conversations with Joe Taduachi, the director now, not the interim director, of utilities in regards to that. And so there, and correct me if I'm wrong, from utility staff perspective, but in March, I believe utility staff will certainly be offering their opinion on the upstream solution in regards to any solutions that they've looked at that could eliminate the need for the 36 flood wall and, which is part of the feedback. But my understanding as well is that currently, there isn't any new money or time that's being spent at the consultant level to do further investigations of an upstream. Right now, the council has pretty much limited the direction to the staff in terms of what to spend time and money on, and that is within the variant one option. And so that's all the work that's been going on. So when staff, utility staff would come back to us in March, they would be able to provide a synopsis and putting all that together of work that's already been done in terms of upstream. But you're unlikely to see any new work that might be coming out of the consultant as within the upstream because really, the staff has not had council direction to go and look at that. And I don't know if I'm summarizing that in the right way, but I think that's my understanding in having conversations with Joe. So certainly, we can have a conversation. Staff, I think, would be willing to offer their professional opinion about, they've looked at upstream before, here's everything we've looked at, here's our final conclusion of whether we think that 36 flood wall can come down or not. But I don't think they're going to come with new information and new study.
And I appreciate, it's helpful, I think, for all of us to hear that clarification so that expectations are aligned with what's actually going on. Maybe this was clear, but just in case it wasn't, there's great, even if there's no new analysis, I think this board needs to hear in a sort of consolidated way, what analyses have been done and, you know, what were the basis for the various conclusions that you all reached? And so that at least we have a complete understanding of the current state of play on that. I guess, one question is, if nothing new is being done, does it still make sense to wait until March? Or are we better off? In other words, if the presentation isn't going to change from, you know, tomorrow through March, because it's all material that's already been pulled together. And I throw that out. I just want to, you know, just be completely transparent about this. What I want to avoid is a situation where after the presentation, one or many members of this board say, gee, we need a deeper dive on the following aspect of the upstream. And others say, well, knowing that, we kind of wish we hadn't lost the last two or three months. We would have been perhaps working on that. Or maybe goes to council if you feel you need authorization to dive into whatever it is. It's getting a little hypothetical here, but that's what I want to avoid is, are we going to endanger sort of losing several months only to then say, oh gee, maybe there's more to be looked at here? That's, but if you all feel that March is the right time, I won't push it too hard, but I don't want to.
I would just say that in March, we want to put it all in context. So if that's something you guys specifically would like to see in March, I think it's important that we have it in context with the analysis we're doing now as well. And that's kind of the point of waiting for February because there's obviously a couple new council members as well. So we're going to have to review kind of the history of this project. So that's what we're working on now is compiling that history with the new analysis so you get the full picture. And that's what we would bring back.
And because one of the things we had asked for was, I think, and this was Karen's motion, was I think she called it a side-by-side, but the basic idea was a direct juxtaposition of, here's what an upstream alternative would look like with respect to identified criteria or metrics, and here's what variant one would look like with respect to those same metrics. You can sort of do a direct comparison. So if it's just given the state of development of variant one, if the right time to do that is March, that's fine. If it's, you know, if you already know the answers on the upstream side, maybe sooner's better. But it is, you're right that we do want to, we don't want to just look at upstream in isolation, but rather in a juxtaposing it against variant one.
I have one comment on that. I unfortunately missed the extended meeting on the topic, but did want to be clear for me. More information on upstream is wonderful. I personally am really focused on more detail on what the exact wetland mitigation proposal looks like, who's going to pay for it, what the cost estimates are, and what the trade-offs related to this flood wall in terms of wetlands really actually look like. Because in my experience, it wouldn't be the first time that wetlands were lost and then forgotten to be replaced.
Right. And we also heard from council about getting, meeting with permitting agencies upfront and trying to get their input as soon as possible. And the Army Corps, which regulates wetlands from the federal level, is one of those agencies. And also, the city has a very strict wetland ordinance as well that we would have to meet those requirements. So I think there's some, hopefully, there's some comfort in that there are federal regulations that we would have to meet and there are penalties if you don't meet those requirements.
Yeah, I think from my own comfort level, just having a succinct presentation of that at that time is going to be very helpful.
Okay.
And Brandon, I want to, I think, reiterate what Tom said. I'm a little concerned. It strikes me that there may be a little confusion or uncertainty about the board, this board's role in the whole decision-making process. And I would agree wholeheartedly with Tom's recommendation that the sooner we can kind of get that conversation out there, as far as this board is concerned, the better. Because I'm just a little reluctant to think that in March, you know, if there are some concerns that this board has, that, you know, once again, we're kind of getting late in the process. And the sooner the better, if we can do that.
Yeah, and I do want to just let you guys know, I'm sure you're probably aware, but that feedback you guys generated in September, we did provide to council as well in an information package on October 1st, just so you guys know, they do have that information.
Yeah, but I think we want to.
Before the election or after the election?
Before.
It was before.
Before, yes. So.
We do want to reiterate the board's prerogative, though, on the open space issues and that there was a recommendation from this board to council based on its request so that it's not like this board is out there, you know, on its own. Council asked us for, you know, some feedback.
Right. Yeah.
And I believe more feedback will be generated in March. And if this board wants to repeat or, and I imagine that feedback will be compiled with past feedback to provide to council again. So in May, you know, you all may have more direct questions or feedback or recommendations, depending on what form you're looking for to council in May. But from a, just sitting in the staff capacity level, you know, with, without, you know, council has provided parameters to where to spend the money and resources right now for the utility staff. So again, you know, I want to be transparent about the fact that that money is and that resources is being spent on variant one analysis right now because there's a timeline associated with that. And understanding what you're saying, Tom and Dave and Karen, about wanting, you know, to have that conversation about upstream. But I also just want to temper expectations that there isn't going to be, you know, that new analysis that you all may want to see or looking to see. And certainly, if that wants, if you want to reiterate that recommendation to council again, for them to discuss and consider in May, that would be another opportunity to do that.
And I appreciate the, I appreciate what you're saying. And so you could follow along that line and maybe sort of cut to the chase a bit here. I mean, does staff feel that its existing analysis and information on the upstream alternatives is sufficient to answer the, sort of the question or the way we framed the issue in our motion? Because obviously, if the answer to that question, the answer to the question I just posed is no, then we do need to sort of have a discussion. Because then we're, I don't want to engage in a fruitless exercise if we already know that what we hear in March is going to be insufficient. Then we ought to do something so that we're not faced with that situation three months from now. If your feeling is, oh yeah, you have enough to do the analysis to answer the question the way we framed the issue, okay, that's different. But I will, I do sort of want to directly pose that question so there's no kind of misunderstanding about what we'll be seeing in March.
Right. And I think the concepts that have been evaluated to date, we could do that analysis. But with the new concepts that we're working on now, I think it's really important you see those side-by-side to the new concepts as well, because that's kind of the direction we've gone down. So rather than looking at it in the past, I think we should really look at it with all the options on the table as we understand them. And that would be in February when we really have that clear understanding.
And Tom, if I'm hearing you right, why don't John and I and Don get together with Joe and Brandon and staff and see, you know, if you're prepared to deliver more information on that question prior to March? I think that's what you're asking. If, if, if they already sort of know and they just need to put together that opinion, can we do that sooner than March? And that's your question.
And the flip side would be, if you look again at what the statement was from this board and conclude, gee, we really haven't looked at the upstream alternatives in sufficient depth to answer some of those questions, we ought to then have that, I don't know, have that discussion about, well, okay, what are we doing then? Is that mean we need to make a statement to council that we would request additional funds be authorized so that you could be in a position to answer our question? Or there may be other alternatives. But I don't want to just wait till March to learn that, oh, we really don't know the answers to the questions that the board posed because we haven't been looking at that. If that's the situation, then let's tackle it now and figure out the path ahead. So we're all.
Yeah. I agree, I agree with you, Tom. And I, I feel like I need to ask for some clarification on language that's being used. I heard you say the Highway 36 flood wall. And I think it's not in the CDOT right-of-way anymore. It's on an open space and mountain parks flood wall at this point.
We're on the same page on that, yep.
And, and the kinds of information that the Open Space Board of Trustees was requesting was information that we felt we needed to be able to make any of the decisions that council is asking us or recommendations that council is asking us to make. And if we don't get that information, then we're going to be at a point a few more months down the line, and we're going to throw up our hands and say, we can't answer that because the information we asked for in September still hasn't been provided. So I think the request of getting that information sooner rather than later is very important. I was expecting a little bit more than this schedule tonight. I was expecting some of the answers to the September questions. So I'm totally in agreement with Tom that, my personal opinion is that OSBT keeps getting squeezed. And that started happening in June-July when city council said, oh, problem with CDOT. It's okay, we'll build the whole thing on open spacelands, except for what we can negotiate to put back on CDOT land. And that requires a whole set of decisions on the part of OSBT that we cannot answer, in my opinion, until we have answers to multiple questions about underground flow and how that's going to be sustained, about the upstream options. And what, and my understanding was that there would be an analysis by staff, not by consultant, of upstream options and that that would come back to us. And so my question is, what happens between this scheduled presentation and when you're coming back to us in March, expecting us to have some substantive discussions, opinions, decisions, recommendations, when we still don't have any information?
So if I may.
Sure, Dan.
So where we take out the last year, where we thought we would come to you next would be as we started to get towards a 30% design of the variant. We're not there yet. I believe what utility staff is going to be asking in May is, do we, can we proceed with getting to that 30% design? And that's when we'll start to know more specifically about the very specific issues of impacts that you all will need then to weigh in on the use of open spacelands for this project. Because my understanding, as in conversation with this board a year ago, was it would be hard for you to rule specifically, if it became a disposal process or a recommendation process, whatever that process is, that it would be hard for you to do specifics without knowing the specific impacts. And the project, for whatever reasons, over the past year, is not getting to that 30% when we would have that type of details for you. So my understanding is, is what we want to get to in May is that green light to go and proceed to that 30%. Am I, at which time, we're going to then start to generate more of the specific information on exactly how long does that flood wall need to be, exactly how much space of open space do we actually need to utilize? And those other questions are going to be central in deliberations with this board. Because right now, we're still looking at variants within variant one, and that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I feel like I have to say again. The whole concept was changed in June. From a flood wall in the CDOT right-of-way to, oops, that's not possible, so we're going to put the flood wall in open space and mountain parks land. That, to me, was a significant change that is being eclipsed by all these other plans and timelines and perhaps ignored.
And I would agree. I think with that change, one of the concerns I have is, you know, whether a flood wall is necessary at all, given the potential for other options. And that's where the upstream, you know, options analysis becomes critically important. And I think before this board can make a determination, both on the wall and, you know, on the wall's location, we should feel confident that, you know, that's the best, if not the only, alternative that makes sense. And quite frankly, I'm not there at this point.
I would agree. And part of the analysis we're working on is from that CDOT information. So that's why it's important we take the new design and see what the CDOT impacts are as well in.
Can you say a little bit more about what you mean when you say the CDOT information?
So moving the wall out of the right-of-way. So there's some environmental impacts.
The lack of CDOT.
Yes, there's environmental impacts we're going to, we need, we're including in this analysis that we're working on right now. And I think it's important for you guys to see those numbers in comparison to what we've done with the upstream option, to be able to really weigh how much further you would like to go. So I think. So I think that's, that's why I think March is a really good time, because you need the analysis we're doing now, because it's still just a conceptual analysis. And that's the same we've done to date, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly. I think, I support my co-trustees' requests for additional information. I do want to be careful playing the game of asking for more information forever. I do think there's a more interesting conversation on the other side of this, which is a pretty clear view on the impacts being requested. And I think it's going to require a really deep look into the community's values about the lives of living beings, you know, both animal and human. And I just want to reiterate for myself that it doesn't become productive until a description of the mitigation that is sufficient to cover for the kinds of damages being contemplated has really been spelled out.
Sure.
So that's, that's a really key part for me. There's a lot of ask here, I feel like, of this board, but there isn't much detail about what is being planned in terms of mitigation.
Yeah. And in our statement to council, that one of the four precondition, we identified four preconditions that we felt had to be addressed before we would even consider a disposal, never mind how we'd actually vote on the disposal, but before we felt the disposal question was even ripe for decision. And one of them is exactly that, that, you know, a fully formed mitigation plan would be, you know, presented to us. You know, that's probably a little bit down the road, but I agree with how the sooner we start to get a sense of what that is, you know, the more effective our feedback to council can be on whether, you know, the mitigation plan seems to be on the right track or isn't on the right track. So I think there's an understanding that you all will get together to reflect on the concern that we're raising and how we're using the next three months, and, you know, whether some course corrections appropriate here, so that, you know, there's no misunderstanding about what, what we'll be seeing in March.
Yeah, I think the goal is to make the March meeting as productive as we can, and if there's some things we can get out to you sooner, that's the type of discussions we'll have.
Yep.
And I would suggest, in the interim, making it clear to council that because we have so many questions, and we have a role in making recommendations to council on both the project and disposal, potential disposal of OSMP land, that that's a time chunk that needs to be attended to, that it can't just be glossed over. There needs to be significant time to both, for us to both get information and ask questions and understand enough to be able to make a reasonable decision. And that that's not an insignificant chunk of time, in my mind.
Sure.
Could I ask you a question? Brendan or Douglas, sir?
Sure.
So in May, if you get the green light to move with some form of variant one, what's the timeframe again? I think you probably gave this to us in September, the timeframe of when we would expect to be around the 30%, when we would start to get a lot more details of this project, that would know what the impacts are?
Right. And the presentation in September, I think, we probably have at least a year's worth of design after that point. But the idea would be that we're coming back to this board at some of those key milestones, mitigation plan, groundwater, all those things, as we're proceeding to that 30% design for whatever the configuration is, and really getting your input as we're going along to make sure we're down the right track, so when you guys actually get to that point, you've been involved in the process. And that's part of the reason for me coming tonight. I know it's not very, a lot of information on the technical side, but I think our next presentation will be very technical. And I just want to prepare you guys for what we're working on and what the process is looking like for the city and just engagement for everybody, including you guys as well, so.
Okay.
And I appreciate it, too. I appreciate the time.
Right, and just, you probably know this, but March 11th is also the night that we're tackling prairie dogs. So someone has...
I have it tentatively on here, so I think we'll work with your staff on...
One of, one of those issues goes first, and one of them goes second, and someone will be here for a long evening.
I think we're...
And we certainly will.
We'll work with you guys on when's the best time to bring that forward to you guys as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Brendan. Thanks, Cole. Thanks, Douglas, for coming tonight. Appreciate your time.
Oh, you're welcome.
Before we introduce the next subject, I just got a, I just want to introduce a couple of formal, informal matters that I wanted to do, would make sure somebody in particular was in the room at the time. But I just want to make reference to a milestone that most of you are aware of, but it was exactly 30 years ago tonight that a young ranger named Mark Gershman made his first appearance and first, his voice was first aired in front of the OSBT. And it was, I believe, this exact date 30 years ago. And so, actually, I actually think, well, maybe it was December 9th or something like that.
Were we videotaping sessions?
I don't think we were videotaping it. But so I wanted to use that milestone as a chance just to tell the full board and also any community members that may be watching, that at the end of this year, Mark will be formally retiring from the department. Luckily, after a little bit of hiatus, he will be coming back in a part-time capacity for, for a little bit of time to help wrap up some projects and to work on some lifts that we're doing. But all intents and purposes, his last formal, full-time day with us is going to be the end of December. So I just wanted to recognize the milestone, and just wanted to make a few comments about Mark. You know, you spend enough time here in the city and in the department, and you're naturally going to carry a lot of different titles along with you. And a few of them that, that I have written down here is ranger naturalist, wetland ecologist, resource conservation supervisor, monitoring work group supervisor, environmental planner, lead planner, and supervising the planning and design work groups. So I don't know how you didn't get more different titles in there in your tenure, but that's pretty impressive. And Mark actually contributed to a number of our, and led or contributed to a number of plans, including our visitor master plan, who I believe Dave is very familiar with, and our grassland ecosystem plan, our forest ecosystem plan, some study area trail plan. So his fingerprints all over the department. And I just wanted to make sure that I paid homage to Mark's service with the department, and to acknowledge his, 30 years ago tonight, you might have been sitting in that same exact chair. So hats off to you, and thanks so much for your service to the department. One other, a couple more informal before I bring up our next subject. But on December 17th, a reminder that council is going to be considering the Shanahan Ranch Acquisition Project. So if anyone wants to be in attendance to that, there'll be about a 15-minute presentation from Luke, and we're expecting about a half hour of questions and responses from council on December 17th. We will be the first public hearing item on the agenda. So, and I also just wanted to make an announcement, although I'm sure people have figured out if they're watching, that, that the recommendations for the GEPART Integrated Site Plan is on for the January calendar. Previous iterations of our projected schedule would have called for it to be tonight. Staff needed more time to refine the recommendation that they're going to be bringing forward. So that will be in front of you at the January 8th. And that will be a public hearing and an opportunity for any community members who want to chime in and voice their opinion on our recommendation or the project as a whole. January 8th will be that time. So with that, we'll move on to item number C, which is our Master Plan Kickoff Community Event. And Allison Eklund, our Community Relations Coordinator, will give us a short presentation on that.
Hi, this will be short and sweet. I want to give you an update that the Master Plan rollout and appreciation event will be in the end of February now. You may have seen in your packet calendar a January 27th date. We have a lot more planning and preparation to do, so it will be later on in February. And the goal of having this event is really to take the time to thank all of the community for participating in the 18-month-long process with us, and giving us a lot of great input. As you've probably heard the stats, we received over 10,000 comments. We held seven well-attended community meetings, two drop-in listening sessions, and received 1,300 responses to the statistically valid survey. So what that says is that we really couldn't have done it without the community. So we want to take the time to thank them, keep the excitement and the momentum building with the plan, and we'll also be able to present that night the final version of the plan. So we'll get it out of a Word document and have a final, final plan there that night. So that will be exciting. We'll also have a graphic scribeer attend, and we'll cover a wall, and she'll be drawing what she hears from the community that night. So in the end, we'll have a really great visual, and we'll have pie, so. We'll make sure to post the date once we have it final, but we'll see you all there.
All right.
Good? Questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Allison.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to item number D, we're going to invite our science officer, Brian Aniker, up here. And I thought I would just take the opportunity to say a few words about Brian, since he probably wouldn't say it himself. But typically, when we're introducing new program areas to initiatives, we always ask the staff to introduce themselves, tell them a little, a little bit about their background. We did it with the trail staff. And so I just want to say, this is a former alumni of my college, University of Wisconsin grad right here, graduated from the University of Wisconsin. He's got about 20 years of experience working in six different states. And I believe it, California and Colorado and Arkansas and Pennsylvania and Wisconsin are all part of the states that, that you have your fingers in. He's got a bachelor's degree in botany and conservation biology from UW. He's got a PhD in ecology from the University of California, Davis. And he's got post-doc experience working with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. So we're really honored that he's serving in the capacity as the science officer, and in that capacity, he really supports all of OSP, OSMP, and, and the work we do in terms of inventorying and monitoring and research projects and data analysis, and making our data available to the community and to the public, and promotes scientific collaboration throughout the department, and is our data liaison in some aspects to other departments within, within the city. So with that, I will let Brian tell you a little bit about what he wants to present to you tonight.
Thanks, Dan. Hi, everybody. I can get this to work?
Oh, I turned it on.
Turn it on. Good. Okay. So these are the three points outlined for my talk tonight. During that 18-month master plan process, we heard loud and clear from the community, we'd like more data, we'd like to know about the trends, we'd like to understand how you use data to make decisions. And I think we did a really great job of daylighting a bunch of new information as part of our system overview report, through our community workshops, and in the master plan document itself. But as part of the master plan, we made commitments to both refine and accelerate our scientific approach to conservation and recreation, which I think are best illustrated in our two learning laboratory strategies. So I'll describe what those are tonight. But also in an outcome that we had in the master plan around shared informed stewardship. So tonight, I'll review those strategies, spend most of my time on that learning laboratory part, give you a couple of examples of where we've used data to inform decisions in the past, and then have some comments about how we can get even better at the way we collect data, and how we use that data in doing so in a cost-effective manner. So these are the two strategies I alluded to in the master plan. Ecosystem health and resilience. Seven was develop a learning laboratory approach to conservation, and nine was a learning laboratory approach to recreation. So what I'd like to do tonight is imagine our learning laboratory as a physical building that has three rooms in it, and that's surrounded by the open space land system. And I'll then give you a tour of those three rooms. The first of three is our inventory room. And an inventory is simply a complete listing of items from the system overview report. Here's an example, table 5.1, which is species diversity by group. The groups there are plants, mammals, birds, butterflies, reptiles, amphibians, and fish. And we know the system well enough to put some estimates down on how many of each of those we have. So for example, for plants, in total, over 1,000 different unique plant species. And then further, we estimate that 741 of those are native, and 275 of those are non-native. And of course, our efforts at inventory go above and beyond that. We have pretty detailed understanding of our cultural resources. We're starting to look below ground, to think about what we have in terms of soil carbon, for example. We've got a really good idea of the structure of our forests, which species there are, what the composition of those forests are. A new initiative is to start to think about where our scenic views are, and what those scenic views are worth in terms of a resource. And detailed understanding of the infrastructure we have on the system for visitor use, and getting better at putting all this kind of inventory information into an asset management system where we can track and understand the condition of these assets. The second room, then, in our learning laboratory is our monitoring room. Monitoring is assessing the condition of the resources on open space and thinking about how that condition changes over time. One of the best examples of this is from our grassland plan, which we alluded to earlier, which we call GMAP, which was published in 2010. And thanks to Mark's work, it has over 50 different indicators proposed that we could measure to understand the health of the grassland system. So I'm just going to give you an example from one of those indicators and how we measure it over time. So as you know, one of our conservation targets in the grassland context is Xeric Tallgrass Prairie. This is one of our most special grassland types, has some of the highest level of species diversity and the unique combination of species in these communities. And the indicator I want to highlight is, in fact, the number of native plant species per 100-meter-square area. 100 meters square is our 50-meter-long transect with 2 meters width to make 100 meters total. And you'll see that here on the Y-axis ranging from 0 to 50. And then I'm going to show you the data as we've measured it, starting in 2010, with the adoption of this plan through to 2017. Are we ready? Here comes some numbers. Okay. So in 2010, the average species richness in the Xeric Tallgrass Prairie was 39.8 species. And in 2011, that went up to 45.4. And you can read the rest of the numbers as we go through to 2017. And I've colored the bars according to their condition class. So in the grassland plan, we said, here's an indicator we'd like to measure, and here's some numerical thresholds that will tell us if we're doing a poor job in terms of the health, a fair job, a good job, or a very good job. And so according to those thresholds, the condition of this community with regards to this one indicator is good. It's green. And it's green each and every year. And why I like this example is because when we saw this, we thought, wow, that's remarkable stability overall in terms of change over time in this grassland system. We're not seeing major increases in species diversity or major reductions in species diversity. So that's some level of confidence that we're managing in a way where the climate's not changing rapidly enough to make species diversity change dramatically in short order. And also like this example, because when we saw this result, we said to ourselves, is this the most cost-effective way to learn about this resource, going out year after year and measuring it? Or can we reduce the frequency of measurement to something a little more cost-effective? And indeed, we decided to reduce our frequency from an annual basis you see here to every third year. So that's our monitoring room. And then our third room is our research room. So research is a systematic investigation of something to establish facts and reach new conclusions. It's different than monitoring in the sense that it's not repeated typically over time. It's more of a discrete project, and that it's often hypothesis-based. So you have a prediction that you go out and test on the land. So you have a prediction that you go out and test on the land. An example I'm going to use here is tall oak grass, which is a non-native, short-lived, perennial grass that's invading on open space land, especially just below the N-Car site, but pretty extensive beyond that site. In that area, we fenced off a 72-acre enclosure. And on the left side of this fence line in the photograph, you can see tall oak grass, which is that blond-colored species where we haven't done grazing. And then on the right side is inside that 72-acre enclosure where we've grazed repeatedly in the spring with cattle. So that prescriptive grazing approach, then, has reduced the cover of tall oak grass dramatically and increased the cover of our more preferred species, like the one you see here in purple, which is the late-season big blue stem, which is a preferred native grass in this conservation target. So you can see it's sort of significant by inspection, which is a great Mark Gershman quote, thank you for that, Mark, that it seems to be working. But this is a very cherry-picked photograph, and we've got a bunch of replicated samples inside the 72-acre enclosure that show you some of the contingency where it depends on where you look in terms of where the cattle went and spent their most time, and some different elements of landscape topography, water holding capacity, and soils. So we're happy to have the data collected to get a sense of that variation on the landscape scale. And sticking with tall oak grass, I've just put three bullets there that illustrate other research questions we've approached and how we've used the assets in our community to help us answer them. So we have a project working with a consultant in the community to look at some different herbicides and herbicide application rates for controlling tall oak grass. We've given a grant to a professor at CU Boulder to look at plant soil feedback, and this is the notion that tall oak grass upon invasion starts to condition its soils in ways that further its own growth and deters the growth of native species. And we've worked with the CU Boulder Restoration Ecology Class to think about what happens to all the seeds that get produced above ground by tall oak grass once they hit the soil surface. Do they get incorporated into the soil and provide a reservoir of seed? Therefore, if we mow down all the tall oak grass every year, it's just going to come back year after year? Or is seed relatively rare in the seed bank, and so we should feel confident that what we see above ground, there won't be a legacy of tall oak grass continuing to come back? And spoiler alert, there isn't a real strong seed bank for tall oak grass. That's encouraging.
Before you leave that, can I just clarify something that you said? In this second bullet?
Yes.
Did you say that there's something that happens in the soil that deters the growth of native species?
Yeah. Typically, the way this would work is through nitrogen or carbon or the ratio of the two. It's very common for a non-native species to alter that ratio in a way that favors its own growth, either by enhancing nitrogen or deleting it.
Oh, by effects from the non-natives.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Their own feedback in the soil makes the soil better for itself, but worse for natives that aren't adapted for that.
I misunderstood what you said. Thank you.
So that's kind of a tour of our lab, but are we any good in terms of this learning laboratory approach? So to answer that question, I'm just going to show you some of our accomplishments in 2019 that I think point to the answer to that question of being yes, we're pretty good at it. So our own staff conduct about 40 research and monitoring projects in a year like 2019, and that's spread across over 20 different staff in the department that have scientific training. Working with the community, we have two major citizen science projects. One is the raptor monitoring program, and the other is the bat monitoring program. We have a funded research program that offers small grants every year. In 2019, we offered 10 of those grants to, those typically go to professors and graduate students. In addition to that, we permitted 40 different unfunded research permits to allow people to do their research on open space land without funding. We partner closely with Boulder County Parks and Open Space and Jefferson County Open Space, in addition to other agencies. We produce four peer-reviewed publications and scientific journals, two of those with our own staff as co-authors, and two from grant recipients. We published two technical reports. You saw the Undesignated Trails report last month, which included an innovative story map, which allowed you to read the story but also start to interact with the data in the same place. So it's kind of a nice explanation, exploration combination. The master plan statistical survey, of course. Along with that, we published all that data to the City of Boulder Open Data Catalog for anyone to download and to analyze for themselves. And moreover, we even put a document there that showed our work so that somebody could take that raw data and repeat our analysis step by step to derive the exact results we had in the report. And then, once they have that, they can start to change some of the choices that we made if they so chose to do that. And we are involved in four conferences. The Fronted Research, or the Front Range Open Space Research Symposium was in spring of this year, hosted by Jefferson County. The Colorado Open Space Alliance Symposium was in Steamboat. We staff from Open Space helped to organize that, and a lot of our staff presented there. We helped to organize and also presented at the Boulder County Nature Association Eco Symposium in spring. And next week, Thursday, we helped to organize, and we'll be presenting at the Soil Revolution Conference. And last time I checked, there was about two registration slots left, so if you're interested in attending and haven't registered, you might be able to sneak in. So here's the 20-plus staff. Some of you who have been following open space issues for a long time might recognize almost all of these names. Some of you who are new, these might be new names, and you'll get to know us over time. I put the list up just to show the bench strength that we have in terms of the number of staff we have with training, but also the diversity of training. You have the, they've got to have plant ecology positions, wildlife ecology, wetland ecology, riparian ecology. But we have some of these other positions that are more innovative and bleeding-edge of where science is going. I think my own position in terms of integrating data science is one of those. We've got somebody really focused on study design, trails research, human dimensions research, recreation ecology. Okay, so how do we use that information to make real decisions? Can we give a couple of examples where we think we've done a decent job of that? First one I want to mention is the use of our public surveys to guide the development of new programs. Visitor Master Plan was preempted with a resident survey in 2004. 512 responses from City of Boulder registered voters asked a question about how appropriate would it be to require dogs to be on leash in the first 100 yards of trailheads? 62% of respondents said very appropriate, and 24% said somewhat appropriate. So combined, we take that as strong support for the development of our trailhead leash program, which is in place today. Another one, a little more complicated, is the use of vegetation monitoring to guide where we relocate prairie dogs to. The example here is the South Strand property, which is south of Marshall Lake in the southern part of the system. Vegetation monitoring conducted in that same transect style in 2017, and we measured several indicators. I'll show you three here. First one is native species richness, the same thing we talked about earlier, the number of native plants per unit area. The criteria we would have to make the site suitable for long-term sustainability of prairie dogs is we'd like to see at least 18 native species there. We measured an average of 28.4. The interpretation, then, is the site passes the indicator would be suitable. Bearground, we want to see no more than 22% cover of bare ground in that same transect. We observed 1.7%. Interpretation is we pass the criteria. And then perennial grass cover is greater than or equal to 60%. The observation was lower than that at 41.1, and the interpretation is a fail. And so the recommendation, then, is that the site would not be suitable for relocation at that time. Although we noted during the data collection phase that that site had been recently grazed, and in fact, was actively being grazed during measurement. And when you go to measure vegetative cover, and the site has been grazed recently, you're going to get an underestimation of plant cover because the plants are going to grow back, and the cover would be higher the next time you look at it. And in fact, through further reconnaissance and vegetation mapping in subsequent years, the decision was made that the cover was sufficient to make the site suitable for relocation, and the permit was sought in 2019 and granted from the state. And later in 2019, over 500 prairie dogs were relocated to the South Strand and adjacent sites from agricultural sites further to the north. So it shows how data is one source of information and two decision-making in how that information can change over time, but we use it as a guidepost to making recommendations. Here's seven other examples I won't bother reading to you. If you have questions on these, we can flip back to them and talk through them. Okay, so the third thing I want to talk about is this idea of moving towards getting shared informed stewardship. So we work hand-in-hand with the community to get even better our approach to data collection and connecting that data to decisions. So I think one role for the community and council and the board is to continue to support and promote some activities that lead to shared informed stewardship. We have open houses, like our Trails Open House and our Restoration Open House, great opportunities for us to show you information and put it in the context of our management choices. Field trips, a great chance to get out on the land and see what it looks like roots on the ground. Continue to bring you updates like this one going forward. The grassland plan and the forest plan are expected to see updates over the next 10 years. Those will be built on a foundation of data and information that we've collected since those plans were originally put into place. The symposium, which I'm showing the flyer from 2019, will be bringing back again in 2021. The City of Boulder Open Data Catalog is a great resource that's growing all the time. Chance to access our data and make your own interpretations. We'll continue to look for more citizen science projects. I think with master plan implementation, we'll have a lot of opportunity there. We're looking for ways to make reports more interactive as opposed to static and hard copy, so look for more story maps. And you may have seen the Visitation Data Explorer, so chances like that to start to interact with the data and see it at whatever scale's relevant to you. And if you like the old-fashioned eight-and-a-half-by-11, 100-page PDFs, we have over 400 of those, thanks in part to Dave's work, available at this web link. And I'll mention in a minute some approach we're going to have to add some value to those, too. Second area I think we can work on is to start to think about the cost of this work because it doesn't come for free. So any new ask that our own staff have, or we get from the board, or the council, or community, comes with a cost. We have to think about how we budget for that, or some sort of trade-off we're going to make in terms of the portfolio of the research and science that we do. Can we add one more project, or do we have to stop one of them? Or do we have to trade off something around project implementation or service delivery? And because these are not free projects, we might also start thinking about ways to reduce costs. One way is to use older and non-local data. I think as we approach a decision, we want data collected this year on that site. But sometimes data that's two or more years old or collected on adjacent sites can get us close enough to understanding the problem and the environment to making a decision without having a new cost to collect data, a fresh dataset. Related to that is let's pay attention to the literature. A lot of other people are studying the same problems that we have, and if we can use and make inferences based on published papers, we can prevent having to make new expenditures. Continue to work with Jefferson and Boulder Counties organizations. It's remarkable how similar our problems are and how duplicative a lot of our research is in particular. So keeping those conversations going and learning from each other, I think, is a major cost savings. There's benefits in informal questionnaires. You can kind of get to most of the way of understanding where the community is at on a subject, and that's much cheaper than doing the full-blown statistically valid survey. And then, once we've done the work to collect the data, use the data. I think there's often the case where we get to the finish line, and the data says one thing, but we end up in a political landscape that we didn't anticipate, or there's special interests there wherein we don't listen to what the data is trying to tell us. So if we've done the work, let's add value to it by using it to make decisions when that's appropriate. Or if we're starting off a new decision-making process and we know the stakes are really high and that there's a lot of values in play, maybe the most more cost-effective thing to do is not go about an expensive data collection process in the first place. So looking internally, what are some things we're doing to improve our approach? The main thing I want to highlight is in 2019, we formed a cross-functional team, we're calling the Science Team, which includes 10 different staff members from eight different workgroups, all levels of our organization. We set out two goals. One is an internal-facing goal of developing policies, procedures, and best practices in these three domains, which I'm showing on the right side of the slide. Data collection and study design, everyone's favorite, statistics, data visualization, and our approach to reporting. And then, looking externally, our main focus is on strengthening our approach to communicating our science to the community. I think the work we do has a lot of value, but maybe we're not the best at storytelling and showing the value to the community. And an example of that, in 2020, we planned to launch a science@OSMP webpage, which might look something like this. It would have kind of a tour of the learning lab, like I've talked about here tonight. Of course, it will have science resources, which will just link out to things like our grants program, our permits program, our dashboards, story maps, open data catalog, announcements for when we have new publications. So it's kind of a one-stop shop to learn about all those different sources of information. We'll have profiles of the science staff, so those 20-plus names I flashed on the screen, a little bit more about who they are and what they do. And then some new things we're going to add is that research report library I mentioned with the 400 studies. Try to make that a little more searchable, a little more user-friendly, some ways to highlight some of those studies, even though they might have a little bit of shine to them, they're still relevant. And another development area is a web video series where we'll do two- or three-minute video shorts where we'll interview staff, potentially in the field, collecting data, and they can tell their story about why they're collecting data, how that data's going to get used to feed into decisions. So we'll make sure you get notified once that webpage launches. So in summary, I gave you a tour of our three rooms of our learning laboratory, gave you a couple of examples of data being used to inform decision-making, and talked about some approaches that the community can join us to get even better at connecting data with decisions and moving towards this outcome of shared informed stewardship. And with that, I'll say thank you and be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Brian. You gave an example, you know, of a dataset that had been collected annually, and now you're thinking every three years is fine. How many different species are there for which you collect, whether it's annual or some other regular periodic basis, that you collect data on the prevalence of that species? And we're aware of things like raptors and bats, but I don't have a sense of how many different species you're actively tracking.
Yeah, the total species list for plants, as I mentioned in the inventory, is over 1,000.
But you actually track, I just thought you meant that's how many we've identified. You're actually tracking?
So that's the biggest sort of species pool we could consider.
Oh, okay.
How many of those are detected in grasslands versus forests versus riparian and wetlands? I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. If you can fit 50 species in 100-meter-square area roughly, and then there's some level of turnover, so the next transect has another 50, but they're not all the same, so you'd start to kind of build a species pool that way of just the grassland transects we measured. So I could certainly get that number. I would estimate it's going to be hundreds.
I'm missing what you're saying. Are you answering Tom's question or a different question?
I was just trying to figure out, maybe I'll restate it in case there was some confusion. How many different species are there for which we regularly go out and survey, whether it's on the system or the whole, or some subset of the system, how prevalent that species is so that you could track, as you did for, I think it was Xeric Tallgrass Prairie Mosaic, you know, track? Mosaic, you know, track the performance over time?
Through a regular inventory?
You know, the way we do have for, obviously, for, just as an example, for raptors, where you can really track it over time and see how that species is doing.
Yeah, and again, I don't have a number off the top of my head. There's several different ways to answer that question. The grassland transects themselves, there are 150 of them, and in those, we record whatever vascular plant species we encounter. And so it's not like we're going to look for a hit list of 20 species through those transects, it's whatever's there. And that aggregation of species is hundreds, I would say. Then, another way to answer it might be our list of rare plant species, how many of those are we tracking? So that would give you a different number. Another number we could produce is how many invasive plant species are we tracking? And those would be more like species-specific lists that we're actually kind of looking at one species at a time.
So where we, thank you, it gives me a sense of the magnitude of that undertaking. For something like an indicator species that we've identified for the health of a particular ecosystem, like I think a bird squirrels was the one for ponderosa pine forests, how many of those do we track how that species is doing?
That's a good question.
Because there's some for which that was, particularly in the West TSA, there was quite a big point about what is the right species to use for measuring as an indicator the health of a particular type of ecosystem. And I don't know to what extent we sort of monitor, which of those we monitor, which ones we don't.
Most of our monitoring is directed through the Resource Management Plan. So for example, what Brian was talking about with the grassland transects, that's what, kind of how that derives. There are a number of other species, Tom, that we track regularly, maybe not to the extent that we do the grassland transects. And that would be, that would be things like, currently, our focus has been on prairie dogs, of course, and where those are across the system, and we track that every year and map it every year. Another example would be northern leopard frog, which you saw a presentation on recently, where we know where they're, every year we go out and we look at where they're breeding and where they're not breeding, and we have an understanding of how that's developing. And I think that was explained to you a couple of meetings ago, of kind of how we're understanding that. Another example would be Prebble's Meadow Jumping Mouse, which we will do, we'll monitor for presence and absence in a number of areas around the system on a routine basis. So those are just some examples. Zabre squirrel, of course, we look more at in terms of protecting nests when we're going into working and doing some forest work in an area, so. But, and then there's, you know, a handful of others, but those are, I would say, kind of some of our main focus. Also, nesting raptors and grasshopper sparrows, so ground nesting birds is another that we spend a lot of our time on.
Thanks, John. It's helpful.
I just wanted to thank you quickly. I was really interested in your points about efficiency of cost and actionability on the science data, especially this idea of the build-out of a website I'm fascinated by. The one question I have, you know, when I do my own looking at some of the researches, research work that sort of, you know, pertains to things we're looking at, it's always difficult to determine what meets quality standards. And I'm just curious, as you just, you talked about utilizing outside research in some of these cases, is there, is there a department policy about how we separate the weef from the chafes?
That's a good question. I mean, the scientific environment, of course, uses the peer-reviewed process. So take something that's published in a journal, and there's some assumption that it's been carefully scrutinized by a group of peer reviewers and the journal's editor themselves. And so you want to take that as sort of your gold standard. Now that said, we don't assume that everything that's published is super high quality, and we've had internal conversations as we review papers that have been published, and we find flaws in those all the time. And so you have to be careful even at that highest level of standard. But beyond that, I think you rely on your own scientific expertise and training and familiarity with the topic to evaluate somebody else's work. And that's really how peer review works in the first place. I might be reviewing a manuscript where it's got a statistical model that I'm really familiar with, and so I'm going to really focus on that, while the next reviewer might be really interested in that species of interest. And so we each kind of come with our own expertise, and we use that as our evaluation of the quality. Beyond that, I don't know if we have a best practice or a set of criteria that we would have. I don't think we have something like that. Be interested to hear if you had some thoughts of what that might look like. There's things like the rigor of the sample design would be something like if we see something that only has a sample size of two or 10 or 30. But so much of that is contingent upon a lot of other factors that be hard to come up with single gold standards that would apply to each study we review, I would say.
Well, it's, I'm totally outside my experience, but I'd be delighted if we got to a place where the department library was one we all felt we could trust and utilize.
Okay.
Right, and I think that another response to Hal's question is that we've now accumulated enough experience in the larger research community. We have a pretty good understanding of, you know, certain people's expertise and qualifications. And so anytime that, you know, you have a research question that someone, you know, is interested in or you're interested in getting that looked at, there is a pool out there of tenured and experienced researchers that I think have a history of good work. And so that's always reassuring as well. And I wanted to say a special thanks. This has been, I think, extremely helpful and reassuring. The one question I have, Brian, is so how are you or how are folks working with the Education and Community Outreach Group as far as, you know, incorporating or integrating some of this information into, you know, the programs that we're providing, school groups and community, you know, the community at large?
Yeah, I think that's a great area for improvement, and there's a lot of opportunity there. And I would look at the Master Plan Implementation as potentially one of the very best places as we approach implementing the strategies and building teams and making sure those teams have subject matter experts and education outreach staff. Part of the webpage I mentioned here, I've directly resourced education outreach staff to make sure any messages we're putting out there are the same messages they're delivering in their program. Climate change is a great one, where they're starting to tell a story for the department on climate change, and we want to make sure we're all integrated in terms of our understanding what the science says and what the impacts might look like, where the uncertainty is, and how we kind of think about it across all of our charter purposes. But I would say to date, it's been somewhat informal, but it comes together through some of our integrated site planning. For example, at Gumbert Hill, where we've got education outreach, giving presentations based on data and based on subject matter expertise, but in a way that's digestible for the neighbors and community to understand it. So they're a real asset to us to help us take something that can seem fairly nuanced and complicated and simplify it into what the average visitor could understand and care about. And at the same time, I think we can, we can do even better going forward, especially in those areas like climate change, but also visitor capacity.
Great. Look forward to that.
Yeah, that's an area where we're trying to take from the informal status to the formal status, and I think the master plan implementation, institutionalizing master plan implementation is really going to do, one of the things that we've been talking with the education outreach folks on is being proactive in terms of identifying projects that might be two or three or four years down the road, and how we can get education and outreach to do upfront work on a project that we may not actually arrive on in a site in two or three years. But there's a lot of great prep work with, working with the community or with neighborhoods on work we know we're going to be doing in that area. So we're asking education and outreach, as well as our communication staff and others that are involved, and proactively looking at projects that are on the slate, either coming out later that year or ideally two or three years down the road, and starting to identify those projects where we ought to, we ought to formalize that alignment with getting education outreach out in front. So it has been a little bit informal, a lot of here and there. And one of the ways of institutionalizing the implementation of the master plan is how can we kind of create this whole strategy of lining up a project over a series of years? I think Tall Oak Grass was one where, was an example of this year, where we had education outreach and Lori Dieter and some of the education staff out there, working on education stuff on the Tall Oak Grass ahead of a project that we'll actually start to see on-the-ground implementation of, so.
Yeah, no, that sounds great. And one other thing, I think the open houses of late, you know, have been a good forum for presenting, you know, information. I think Tall Oak Grass, the open house last week, was a good example of that, where people came and, you know, were knowledgeable, informed, concerned, and the conversations, I think, were much more informed because of some of the work that we did, you know, in preparation for that.
I'll just put a little bit of hint, in the coming months, I'm not sure the exact one, Education and Outreach will present to you some of their strategic thinking about how to look at sites within the system and incorporating the themes to those sites. And one of the themes could be is what are those on-the-ground management challenges that we're wrestling with and how they would take those themes and make it into education outreach programming. So we'll hear a little bit about that in the coming months.
Great. Look forward to that.
Yeah, and I agree. I think that's a very constructive direction. I want to pursue a little bit further the, Brian, you mentioned strengthening communication with the community about this kind of information. And my reaction to some of the suggestions that you had to do that sounded to me more like preaching to the choir rather than to reaching additional diverse members of the community. And it seems to me that, as with other things, people would understand better the research if it was part of a field trip, and they got to see what was actually done out on the land and what kind of data was collected, and then what was done with that data in a field trip context, which again begs this kind of collaboration between the researchers and the education staff. And the other thing that you had on your slide was videos. And of course, that kind of field trip could be videoed for people who didn't go on the field trip. But I'd like to see a lot more of that strengthening communication with the community done in real time out on the land, to the degree that it can. The other two questions that I have have to do with the inventories you described. I now understand that you were describing the vegetative transects, or whatever you call them, the blocks that you transect regularly, the monitoring of those. And in addition to those monitoring studies over decades, you have, I think, 400 studies in the library. And I know from the BCNA symposia that you've had some grad students go back in and deconstruct some of those and learn from the data that's been gathered in various ways. I'm wondering how much of that kind of work is left to be done to learn from the datasets and the work that's already been done? Because it seems to me that may be a very rich repository that could inform us in real ways. Is that true or not?
Yeah, and I would say, the way I think about it is there's a bit of a backlog in terms of analysis and synthesis. And there's a lot of work to be done in that area, and some are long-term datasets, some we've got four years of data, but we're just having the time to really put it all together. So that's one of the things the science team is working on, is if we conceive that there's a backlog in reporting, what are some solutions that we can take to solve the backlog? And one of the things we're trying, in addition to finding graduate students and post-docs to analyze our data for us for a small amount of money, is the concept of a data sprint, a data science sprint, which is a guaranteed amount of time that we give to staff to set aside from their normal business to just look at their data. And they have support from me and a couple other staff members to overcome any hurdles that they perceive in terms of the data. A lot of times, there's roadblocks there in terms of getting data out, combining it with the other kinds of information you need, putting in climate information, doing the statistical models, surviving through all those steps and not getting fatigued and distracted. So by giving a single block of time just to do an acceleration on one particular dataset at a time, that's something we're trying. We've heard staff is interested in that, and we're doing our first one right now, actually. So we're trying things like that to add value to those assets, because that's what they are, is assets that I think we've undervalued to date. And so we can expect, if we're successful, we'll start to chip away at that backlog.
And are there also perhaps possibilities of repeating something again later, like 10 years later or something, rather than constructing a new protocol from scratch?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, and it's a question of how good the metadata is, which is the data about the data. If you have a dataset, but you don't have a dataset that describes where, when, who, why, how, and if those sample locations were monumented or at least GPSed, that'll sort of determine whether you can go back there.
Yep.
And oftentimes, the longer, more time that elapsed between the last time we went there, the ecosystem starts to eat those things, and you can't relocate stuff. It's kind of a fascinating process. Rebar just goes further, further down into the soil, and the caps disappear. But the opportunity's there as long as we have that information to tell us where to go and relocate the samples.
There, as you're describing that, I think of an invasive study that was done by some university in Utah down prior to the spring Brook Loop trails going in. And because of our problems with invasives, those kinds of things seem to me like they might be fruitful things to repeat. My final question has to do with your comment about statistically valid surveys versus informal questionnaires. And I have to tell you that my personal opinion, given the way that the community of Boulder receives data from statistically significant questionnaires, as opposed to informal questionnaires, is that, I don't know what the cost differential is, and you may know that, but no matter, to me, no matter what the cost differential, I would rather have less frequent statistically significant surveys rather than spending time on informal questionnaires, because the community discounts informal questionnaires because they know they're rife with problems and lack of data. Do you have any sense of the difference in cost?
Well, questionnaires can almost be free, other than the time it takes staff to write up a questionnaire and publish it through a web.
And analyzing, yeah.
Yeah, so there's staff time there.
We have a master plan survey data.
I know, and it's round about 50,000 for a full-brodded statistical survey using consultant. And that also, that doesn't include staff time, like someone like Deion or Brian analyzing the data from the consultant.
It would or would not include staff?
Doesn't include that, that's just a standalone cost. So obviously, an informal questionnaire is just a matter of staff time figuring it out. But you're right, Karen, there is a big difference between the two. I think Brian was trying to point towards where we might be looking for sort of a smaller response rate on perhaps a less controversial scientific subject sometimes.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you, Brian. That's great stuff.
Thanks, Brian. All right, Tom, we'll turn it over to you.
All right, so the first item under matters from the board is our response to council's questions on priorities. Kurt and I, and frankly, more Kurt than I, but we did collaborate on a draft set, and those have been, those are in the pack, and so the public has access to them. Leah, do you, do you have the ability to put that up on the screen? I think we probably all have copies of it, but, and then I know, Hal, you had, and maybe that's the better place to start, because you had a proposed significant edit. Maybe to put Hal's edit up and have you, you know, just talk through what it is, what you're driving. you're driving at and then see where we are.
Great. Yeah, I thought in general it was excellent and painted the picture of what we're up against in the next year very well. I personally feel at this juncture, after approving the master plan, a significant budgetary shift away from acquisitions and towards management and maintenance, that a discussion and reiteration of the newly reauthorized sales tax and the specific usages, particularly pertaining to backlog maintenance, is important. I think after listening to the city council study session last night about macro budget issues, it's doubly important that we paint the picture of usage and maintenance on our lands as a very important and long-term investment. We know, you know, due to staff's reporting, that we have quite a backlog in maintenance. And so the general thrust of this language is to reiterate the master plan points that were assigned the largest dollar value and importance in the plan and to also make clear that the sales tax reauthorization is really not about funding ambitious visionary plans but is really about the maintenance on an asset that, I mean, at its absolute most conservative estimate is a $5 billion-plus system. So that was the general thrust of essentially taking what was item number three and moving it to number one. And then the language just specifically bullet pointed those items from the master plan which had the large dollar values associated with it, basically in the hopes that reiteration attracts attention.
So I don't disagree with the way you've characterized the issue. The question I have is where council is actually going to fit into this within the timeframe that we're talking about. I mean, certainly, the way Kurt and I had drafted it was just to remind them that this will be picked up in the budget, which unquestionably is an issue that council has to tackle. Beyond the budget, I'm not, and this is, staff may have some, you know, valuable perspective as well on what's going to council and what's not, but I'm not sure what master plan implementation steps would actually go to council in this timeframe. I mean, I think they can always call up whatever they wish, but I mean, just in the normal course, I'm not sure what we would be doing on the implementation side, but you may.
But Hal is.
I would actually go to council.
Isn't your point that the tax, passage of the tax measure and the implementation of the master plan will be reflected in the budget that we advance to council and that they should be able to see in the budget that they, that's recommended by OSMP and OSBT, those changes?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, the big tension I see is that right at this point where we suggested we are moving to a management and maintenance focused budget, we have this one final amazing easement deal. And I just think that the way those two things interact in our reiteration of the high-dollar items in the master plan makes, basically makes the highest level importance. Not to say that the Prairie Dogs and South Boulder Creek and CU South are not important items, they very much are, but I just think from a longer-term perspective, the shift from acquisitions to maintenance and backlog is a pretty big element of what we're doing.
Sure. So maybe this would resolve the potential confusion I was having is in the very first line, we'll seek council's support, if it's dead, we'll seek council's support of the budget. Because I think that's actually the, what council, yes, the other things build up to the budget, but I don't think we're going to be asking them at any other level of detail to bless an implementation plan or all be in the budget. So if you said, we'll seek council's support of a, of the.
Of the 2021.
FY, of the FY 2021 budget.
That sounds fair to me.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that's a good suggestion. Because they've already approved the master plan, so theoretically, they've supported that, so now it's the budget that, you know, we're talking about.
Yep.
And I think, again, from my perspective, it's worth letting council know what those high priorities are, that, you know, the budget will be reflecting. Because I do think, you know, based on a brief listening to the council conversation at the study session last night, that there is great concern about, you know, kind of the long-term or as some of them put it, you know, the macro vision of where we're going and what the costs are. And I think we want to make sure that we highlight that there's some really urgent, vital issues that we've got to be addressing. And then I think in two and three, you know, we kind of tease out what some of those are, actually specifically for the near term. So Leah, I think when you said 20, it should say FY 2021. The 2020 budget is already.
Right.
Yeah, so it's just should say FY 2021.
Right.
Were there other, I wasn't sure from your note whether there were other changes you were proposing, or is it all captured in number one?
That's pretty much, it was basically to take number three, which was a little bit shorter, bump it to number one and just add a little more detail.
Okay.
Could I ask a question of the board? So one of my, one of the values that I see in providing a piece like this is not so much whether they choose to make one of ours a council priority, but it's, you know, it's an educational tool, especially for 50% new council. This is an opportunity for us to, you know, educate them on certain things. And I'm a little concerned that we are self-selecting in this top master plan funding priorities and listing for, or for that really had no vetting or no process. We have approved through a formal vetting process, top 10, top tier, top tier priorities. And I think that if we, which they may, half of them may not even know what those 10 were. And here, they might look and say, oh, these are the top four master plan funding priorities, when in reality, we have 10 top priorities. And I'm a little concerned we didn't sort of go through any sort of process in identifying which four we choose out of those 10 to put in here.
So the process that was undertaken was looking at the ones that had the most dollar signs associated with them?
No, I think they're the ones that have the ones next to them, right? The priority one.
I guess that's why I formed my statement of more in form of a question, like how did we, you know, I'm not sure how these four got arrived at and whether or not there's value in saying, in not naming our top tier or whether to see if you guys all agree that these are our top or just.
Well, to answer the question, they were pulled from the ones that had the most dollar signs associated from the master plan. And they, I think the essence of what I'm trying to get across here was captured, sort of Councilman Yates talked about the difference between items that are blocking and tackling and visionary elements. My main hope through pulling these out was to communicate the blocking and tackling efforts that we have on this system. I'm totally open to any changes or alterations, but that was basically how they were selected.
So based on the top number of resources, dollars, you know, that would take to accomplish that, that's how these were identified?
Yeah, associated with the number of dollar symbols that were attached to the highest priority items.
They were in the, they were in the funding chapter of the plan and, yeah, it was, I'm not, I guess, I don't know that they're necessarily, the, no, I won't say that. I don't know that putting 10 there will be more helpful. I guess, you know, it's a matter of, you know, here are, you know, here's kind of a collection of them. If, I think if we get too many, you know, you're kind of going to do the eye roll of, geez, you know, you're trying to, you know, just to kind of do the core dump. And this was just an attempt, I think, on Hal's part to identify, you know, some of those that, you know, are among the highest priority. So following that, I wonder if it wouldn't be better to say, top master funding priorities targeted for 2021 include, rather than are, so it doesn't sound like we're making a definitive statement, but include may accomplish what you're seeking to do while recognizing, I think there were nine, it might have been 10, yeah, two, yeah, 10 tier one priorities. I think there were three from EHR and.
Yep.
Three from.
100%.
Okay.
Yep. The main, the main hope is, we experienced a very close call with serious funding volatility for the department. And I just think for new council members, everybody involved, painting the picture of the real ongoing cost of managing a $5 billion-plus system is really helpful.
Okay. So did anyone have any other?
I like your suggestion of include. And I see them as much more digestible than an accurate list of quoting the nine that had number one priority on them. You know, we could, I could edit, but I'll let that stand. Because I think they convey the essence of some of the most important funding priorities that are defined in the master plan.
Okay. So it sounds like that is good to go to council, I think it's due Friday.
And we're talking about leaving.
I think all the rest of it is probably, unless someone else has changes, the rest of it will all be exactly what was circulated the other day.
Flipping three and one.
Yes, then two and three would be in the order, would be the former one and two and then the piece at the end about the three ISPs.
So flipping the three and two.
Well, that is, the way it's on the screen is correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And Tom, does this still, does this all include the other item that's below the three? I believe it was items for council, council information? Yeah, that would still be part of that. Then may I suggest one wording change in that? In the, the first paragraph, the last word, it said, more will generate requests for a council hearing. Often, if council is not involved in actually making a decision, though, we will put it under matters from the city manager. Prairie Dogs was under matters through the whole thing. So just, will generate requests for council consideration or something like that, or council involvement or.
And then just prior line, get rid of A, instead of four A, just request for council consideration. Doesn't have to be a hearing.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, great. So let's see, the next is notification of upcoming public participation events. I think with the movement of the master plan rollout from January to, and as yet unidentified date in February, I don't think there's anything that we need to notify between now and our meeting in January.
January, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. The next item I wanted to spend a couple minutes on, although people may wish to talk about in greater detail, was to at least initially raise the question of a board retreat. There's been some expression of interest and particularly with Kurt not here, I wouldn't propose to try to reach any definite decision, but I wanted to at least float the issue for people to consider and maybe then plan on during the January meeting, coming to a final decision on whether people think it would be useful to have a retreat and if so, you know, when and what would be the subject matter of a retreat. It has been a number of years since the board has had a retreat and we're probably close to a situation where the majority, the vast majority of the board has not had a chance to sort of sit down. And, you know, I think it is worthwhile for a board to periodically get together, kind of off-site, it's still a public meeting, but kind of off-site in a more casual setting to discuss issues, many of which are frankly just sort of board functioning issues in our, you know, what do people feel is working well and what things need to be done differently and to have a chance to talk through those. Often, there's a presentation from maybe the city attorney's office to review certain basic things about, you know, document retention, public meetings rules, just to, you know, kind of remind us all of those. And there may be, you know, some substantive issue that people also would like staff to, you know, kind of lead a discussion on, but that's, at least to my mind, is not the central purpose of a retreat. We typically do those, you know, in our regular monthly meetings. You know, we'll presumably have another board member in April, so at least to my mind, it would make more sense to wait for that rather than to try to rush. To get a retreat done only to, you know, have that change occur. So I don't want to be the person who's sort of leading the charge on this because it's really much more about what you all would feel would be useful, but I did want to, at minimum, float the issue, see if there are initial reactions, but also, you know, give people a chance to, you know, go home and ponder it and then come back in January, ready to, you know, make a firm decision on whether you want to hold a retreat and if so, when and what will, you know, what kind of topics you would like to have prepared for discussion.
I can only think of one small topic that I would advocate to get on that agenda, but my thinking is similar to yours, that I think of a retreat as a way to incorporate a new board member and start a new term with, you know, new people on the board. So I would think one in April would be good.
Yeah, I definitely support that. I think, you know, having an opportunity to get together informally, you know, for conversations is excellent and is very productive. And, you know, there, I'm sure there will be issues or topics that we can, we can consider for the agenda, but I think it's very beneficial for us to get together in a more informal way and off-site and, you know, just kind of have a little more relaxed environment to talk about things.
Yeah, I'd be delighted.
Okay. So it sounds like there's likely to be at least majority support to do that, and so maybe in January, people will have their, and that gives.
You're thinking of setting aside a date before we start making our spring personal plans?
Well, I thought, does that, does that work?
Because we're talking about a date other than the second Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yep.
And so hopefully, you know, it's January 8th, it's actually not, it's, you know, very soon after the new year. Does that, yeah, I don't know if there's any ask of council, I mean, either the board other than us to decide on topics and for staff, you know, kind of to think about dates.
So our director's team meets tomorrow, in fact, in what we call agenda-setting meetings. So we look at the board meetings over the next three months, council, all staff meetings, if we plug in certain things. So why don't we take a look at some date scenarios for what I'm kind of thinking is, right, no later than early May, but April, early May kind of thing? And maybe we could come in January with some potential dates that might work.
And I think, Dan, you know, some suggestions or topics, you know, that you might, or people might find helpful?
Yep. What I was also going to suggest is perhaps in January, if you guys want to appoint a liaison, that could then work because we might have, here's a collection of six or seven things that we would, as a staff, we feel are useful and bounce it off of a board liaison who could kind of, and then come back at a later date to kind of flush out an agenda.
And one topic I would just recommend for your consideration because it reflects a fairly significant change in the last few years from how this board has operated, which is lately, we've been drafting a fair number of fairly detailed statements to council. And there are pros and cons to that. Unambiguously, a pro is that it allows us to provide more information to council in some context and make, rather than just a simple motion that might only be one sentence long, I think it does convey a lot more information and there's value in that. There's an obvious downside, which is some of these have taken a great deal of time for this board to craft and the board, you know, I think understandably. for this board to craft, and the board, you know, I think understandably, is pretty careful on its language, and I'm sure people have watched us sometimes, perhaps painfully, but regardless, just honestly, you know, kind of wrestling with how exactly to say something. And on some of these topics, and it's probably not the last time we're going to make a statement on something like South Boulder Creek, probably on Prairie Dogs either, and that, you know, it does represent a significant change in the way, we didn't use to do that. And I think it's probably worth the board having a discussion about, you know, how that's working, and maybe get some candid feedback from staff on their own impressions of seeing both the positives of some, I think, some very good output, but also some challenging process as we, you know, people sit up here and try to work their way through a potentially lengthy document. So I would just encourage, because I think that is, has been a change in the last two to three years from a fairly longstanding prior practice.
And I think that would be, that topic would be very useful as we kind of enter into the South Boulder Creek, Prairie Dog, you know, issues, you know, kind of later or early, mid, in part of next year, so that, you know, we have a conversation. I think it would be, it would be, or would have been really good to have just a, a conversation amongst ourselves on South Boulder Creek issues, you know, and kind of, gee, you, what do you think, so that rather than being in a formal setting, you know, and having to kind of talk through it, we would have a chance to, you know, just talk amongst ourselves and get a better understanding of, you know, where people are coming from, and what people think are, you know, things that we really need to be talking about.
And I have to say, Tom, that as you said, because you're having seen the shift in the pre and the post-practice, I think it would be very helpful for us to have your perception of the pros and cons of both ways of doing it.
Okay, sure. So I wasn't proposing to do that now, but yeah, it is a way of communicating that. And then there may be other things that people, it just occurs to people on how we, you know, how we do things. Candidly, I think this board is somewhat less formal than a lot of other boards in the way we do things. I think it's worked well, but I, again, that's not a given, that that's the right way, and I think that people should always feel free, if they'd like to someday go back to a, you know, a more formal way of doing things, and, you know, just not always assume that the way we do things is the right way. All right. And Hal, I know you had a matter from the board issue that you wanted to raise.
Not so much an issue as a celebration.
Or a comment, okay.
I just wanted to thank staff members for hosting such an amazing volunteer celebration. It was really remarkable to see all the different people and programs that are getting volunteerism. I have to say, when we talk about science and all the other ways we engage people, it's really clear that volunteering for the department is the real way that you get involved. And so I just really wanted to thank you for hosting such a nice evening. And also to, you know, Ray, you come to our meetings every evening. Your book on the geology of Boulder County was the most sought-after item. I realize it's, it's selling for $125 on Amazon, so it's no wonder people were trying to get it. But in any case, thank you so much for doing that. I hope we keep that tradition up, and I feel, I'm feel sure that everybody there really felt the same way, so thank you.
Any other matters from, anyone else on the board? No?
If I could just let you know, you typically will get your packets on the Wednesday eve, Wednesday late afternoon. Before that happens to be January 1st. So Leah, when do we expect to have more packets go out? Just to give you.
Not on the first.
And we only have six days to review your packet in this case.
Look, I think it's that Friday we are looking at.
Okay, it would either be January 2nd or 3rd is when we'll get the packets out to you.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the 2nd. If we can swing it, it's that Thursday.
It's the 2nd Thursday?
Yeah.
But we could still get the hard copy on Friday?
Yeah, or.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
Thursday 5th at the latest, and we'll get it posted on the web.
Right.
But we won't be in on New Year's Day to do that for you. I think that's what we're saying.
How unreasonable.
All right, so are we adjourned? All right, we're adjourned.